Hello and welcome to American Motherhood, the podcast where we explore how society and politics shaped motherhood in America. Today, we're continuing our local election series with Dr. Koutanya Coombs, Westerville's vice mayor and city council member who's running for reelection this fall. Koutanya is a mom and community builder with a passion for bringing people together across Westerville. In this episode, we talk about the impact she's had in her first term and her vision moving forward. Everything from walkability and transit to supporting families and keeping our community safe. She gives us a behind the scenes look at what it takes to lead locally and what she hopes residents will be able to point to at the end of her next term. My goal with this series is to make local elections more accessible for you, the voters. If you find this helpful, please share the episode with a friend, leave a review and subscribe on your favorite podcast app. And if you'd like to join the conversation, you can always reach me at AmericanMotherhood@gmail.com. Okay, let's dive in. I have Dr. Koutanya Coombs with me today. Thank you so much for being here. If we can start with you just telling us about yourself.
I moved to Westerville about 24 years ago. When I went back to camp, I thought, wow, it was longer than the 22 that I had stayed. But I moved to Westerville and at the time I had a 16 year old going off to college and what would have been a freshman in high school. And we were living in Illinois and searching for a school. My husband was had gotten a new job at AEP. And one of the primary objectives were to find a school that could best enhance a gifted child. And so we selected Westerville South. We liked their baccalaureate program. We liked some of the things that they offer. And so we said, well, our decision for our home is guided by first and foremost, the schools that the children would be attending. And so we liked the rest, what we were reading about the Westerville City Schools and their report cards, so to speak. And so then, and only then did we start to look for houses in Westerville. I was in search for a true community. Prior to that, about every five years, we were moving as my husband was climbing the corporate ladder. And I was really ready to settle down. And so we moved to Westerville and I started to engage and look and find out, what is it that I want to do here? What is it that the city offers for soon to be empty nester? So that's kind of how I got to Westerville. I started out with the chamber because I know the chamber is the heartbeat of most cities. They have the information where to go, who to contact, how to become involved. And so I spent a lot of my earlier years here working with the chamber in various capacities such as ambassador and leadership Westerville and, you know, all of those things. And I quickly adapted to the community and understood just the beauty of the community.
Yeah. Oh, that's wonderful. So tell us what first motivated you to run for city council? And after this first term, what keeps you wanting to do this work?
I ran because I've always believed that representation matters. And so I was on the city website and I did not see me. And that was very important to me. I was particularly interested in city council because I had just received my doctorate degree in public policy and administration. I did not really think that I was going to go in that direction in terms of looking for a job. But after visiting a couple of the council meetings, I really started to think, wow, this is, this is a big deal. And it takes a lot more to run a city than I had anticipated. And so, once I was at the council meetings, I realized that I, it was broken down by several boards. And that was probably the way to learn what was going on. And so I started out with leadership Westerville, eventually took Citizens Academy and, you know, some of the other offerings. But I quickly became convinced that my educational background would be very commensurate to public policy in terms of leading a city. So that's how I got to city council. You know, I did not agree with a lot of the things that was happening or was going on in the city. So my next question was why? You know, why did they make this decision? And that led to serving on other boards, parks and recreations, et cetera. And it all just kind of came together after three or four years being in Westerville. During that time, I was a Realtor. And so I was also double focused on that. And that gave me the other side of the coin, which was all of these little pockets of communities that were in Westerville. And so I, I just decided, just go for it. Just, just give it a shot. And I did.
Oh, that's great. So in looking back at this last term, where have, where do you feel that you've made the biggest impact?
I think the biggest impact was the opportunity to talk to other people. People won't let you just walk up to them and start asking them questions. But if they see that you are a council member or that you are part of Women in Business or whatever community involvement you were, they gave you a little more leeway. They understood that you weren't asking just to get into their business, but possibly you really wanted to know on behalf of a larger group of people.
Yeah, that's a great point. What tough decisions stand out to you these past few years that you personally have had to make or the council as a whole?
I, I believe that my toughest decision was when we came to vote on the marijuana law and all of the events that led up to that. I had to challenge my personal self. And then by weighing in on what is it that the people want? And then how do I manage that? Because someone's going to win and someone's going to lose. And being on council, I always say, there are no real losers. Everyone who comes out to vote is a winner because A, they either got to have their voice made heard, win or lose, or B, they got to win and they had to face that question of now what? And so I, I had to, when, I think it was 51% to 49%, I knew quickly that it was tight. And you had just as many people who were unhappy as it was, who were happy. And through some self evaluation, I knew that, okay, so I have to represent both sides, win or lose. And I had to decide, okay, so one group won at 51%, but how do I close the divide between those who are now unhappy that marijuana was going to be legalized in terms of in your private homes? And weigh that with the other side of the group who said, you know, the country's going to hell in Westerville too. And so I'm mad and I'm not going to participate in anything. How do I bridge that divide? And that was the biggest question that, that I had. And of course, my approach was, well, then maybe we can control when the dispensaries would be open or whether we were going to allow it just to be a medical, to be medical marijuana dispensary, or if it was going to be a recreational and medical. And so we had that long process during which time the legislators had not really given us any strong definition. So there was a six month lull in between that. And that's really what, you know, the people were getting frustrated. Tell us, you know, what you, the city is going to do now. And we could not because the state legislators had not really made a decision, even though the voters had stated their position.
Where does that stand now? I did not follow that one.
Well, the way it stands is the state legislators finally said, these are the hours, these are the range of hours that a dispensary can be open. Each jurisdiction can kind of make its own, I'm going to say enforcement. The law is still a little bit misunderstood, which just says, in your own home, you can have, I don't know, 12 plants. You can't sell them and you can't have them in the car. And oh, by the way, when you get on 270 and get to Gehanna, things might be a little bit different. And so most people think it's a carte blanche law, but each jurisdiction gets to make up when, how many dispensaries they want and whether or not it's, it's going to be enforceable by, well, you have a, you have a joint on the car seat or how, how much oompa oompa they're going to put into that. So I think the public still needs to be educated a little bit better. And I do that. I teach at Otterbine. And I typically at the end of my course, bring an officer in to tell them, oh, by the way, you've worked really hard. You're getting ready to get your degree. But do you want to throw that away because you went from Columbus to Westerville, smoking in the car or something like that?
That's interesting. How do you work at the state level to advocate for Westerville and learn strategies from other cities?
At the state level, I actually, you know, I actively engage with associations and coalitions of other cities. I have friends Upper Arlington, on the Reynoldsburg City Council, Whitehall and Columbus. And we get together periodically for coffee or see each other at events. And we talk to each other. Westerville is Westerville, so I never take anything from another jurisdiction and automatically believe it's going to work for Westerville. But it just gives us a guideline as to what the citizens are saying in those other jurisdictions. I also attend other town hall meetings. I find them quite interesting and I want to know always, what is the difference between Westerville citizens and the citizens in a Reynoldsburg? Or are we all pretty much similar and alike? We all want a safe place to live. We want good schools for our children. We want crime to be down and community involvement to be up. Basically, safety, transportation and housing seem to be the biggest issues because there's only so much space in, in central Ohio and particularly in Westerville.
Right.
So I, I kind of actively engage with those coalitions and, and then I advocate for Westerville. So I do go down to the State House and write postcards from my personal interests and/or the interests of, of Westerville and talk to people. I know a lot of the state reps, I know our congressperson. And so through organizations, we participate and engage in conversations before things become enacted as a law.
Mm hmm. And so when you talk about the postcards, are those meant to be sent to our constituents for like awareness? Or are those directed toward legislators to voice your concerns or questions?
Well, two, I believe an engaged community is the one that's going to be heard. But the postcards are pretty much to be sent to the legislators. And when we do those, it's a, it's a body, it's a group of people. And so you're trying to really get their attention. And the squeaky wheel does get the oil. So I might go down with an organization of 200 or 300 people. I might go down with an organization of 25 people. And we're going to write postcards while we're waiting for our term. I prefer to go down when they're expecting us so that they can give us a little time and talk to us and we can get our questions in for them to respond to.
Sure. Oh, that's great. That's a great peeking behind the curtain. Okay, so you've talked about inclusive opportunities. How do you ensure the budget serves all of our neighborhoods fairly?
Well, it's kind of easy with Westerville because we don't just budget for one year. We've budgeted out for about five years. And the city works, the city manager works at the request of the council. And so we have long lengthy budget periods. So when I got on council, there was, the budget was already in place by the previous council. And so we're looking at trends in the community. We're looking at national trends where we do have to go back in and adjust our budget sometimes because you can't plan for every single thing. So there's always a five year plan. There's actually, it goes more than that, but we deal with it five years at a time. And so it allows us the opportunity to be more thoughtful in how we budget. So we know if a massive construction project, maybe like curb replacing and, and lane expansions are due, it's going to cost a little more money. We may have found out in the interim that we have a lot of issues when the snow, when the ice comes. And, you know, that may mean additional lines and it's just creates a havoc. So you have to have the money in place. Westerville is really, really good. As a matter of fact, we have a triple A bond rating based on how we manage our funds. And that's a big deal. It allows us to borrow money at probably the lowest interest rates available. It allows us to plan for expansions. Maybe we didn't realize that a certain community was going to grow as fast as it has. And then now, for example, with Intel and Meta and other large corporations, Google coming, there's this great need for water. We can anticipate that. There will be a great need for more housing. And we know where our schools are in terms of being able to handle additional students. And so our, our plans are always with that in mind. And you have more time to spend on the future when you don't have to rush and do something right now because it's happening. So to give you an example, we already know that Cleveland Avenue is very, very congested. It used to be five o'clock. It starts at three o'clock now. You have the medical mile on that strip. And so there are hospitals, urgent cares, labs, lots of people coming back and forth. It is one of the major corridors in Westerville. Also, State Street is another one. And so all of those are fed into, from Polaris. And so we know that the things that we have to do, or they knew, anticipate the things that they had to do long before I got on council. And so being prepared and being allowed really ample time to prepare for the future involves collaborating with other entities in the city. I'll give you a good example. When we, when I was on council, we invested in the FLOC system, became a part of the FLOC system. That's a safety measure. So you'll see all of these cameras up and down Cleveland Avenue and other parts of the city. So if a crime is committed, they have them. They can follow them from Westerville to Gehanna to Columbus or whatever. And the next jurisdiction of safety officers can be prepared. He's coming your way. We're clocking him on 270, you know, something like that. I think that's amazing.
I did not know that, but that's so interesting. How do you stand apart from other candidates when it comes to public safety and supporting our first responders?
It has been my experience of being on council that it's pretty much a no brainer when it comes to the safety of our officers. If it goes from gear to ordering an additional truck because it takes a fire engine two or three years to come off a production line. All of that is much easier accomplished when you are not under the gun. The city has a very, very good team in place that can run the numbers that are informed of a shortage, maybe in aluminum or maybe in a salt trucks or something like that. So we're always trying to address those problems in advance. And that makes it a little bit easier and it reduces the cost in many instances because you're not buying at a peak when all of a sudden there's a shortage for paramedic trucks or road scrapers or something like that. Yeah.
Right. And I've also heard in a previous conversation that typically whatever our first responders request for in their budget, that's, that's usually approved.
Yeah, I, in my four years, I've never, I mean, we ask questions still, but we want to make sure that how long is the life expectancy of this truck? Or how many sets of gear should each officer have? If you go into a fire situation and come back, that gear has to go into its laundry system. So you can't wait or you can't not just go out for the next call. So is it two, is it three? And also you have to plan on in terms of personnel, you know, so that you don't overwork the officers, that you have enough people because they are human after all. And, you know, so they have to deal with a lot of mental things. They're seeing death, they're seeing injury, they're seeing crimes. Every time they go out, whether they're a police officer or a fire safety officer or a medic, they, it's that possibility of being injured and harmed or mentally, I'm sure it takes a toll upon them. So we're always looking at who's retiring, how many people we need to replace with that ahead of the game. And then of course, as the city grows, you usually have to increase your number of, of safety officers also.
Right, right. So beyond police and fire, how should the budget address traffic safety, health and community resilience?
I would say for health, we, of course, you've heard this before. We are a city in a park. We know the correlation between good living, providing ample bike paths and, and the BMX park and opportunities for people to play soccer and be healthy and get exercise and, and having cameras in our park for safety for early morning joggers or walkers. And so we pretty much support that. Our Parks and Recreation Department, you know, are always looking for activities to engage our residents with safety and health combined. And so we invest into those systems and those services that keep not just families engaged, but even people that don't have children, that just may want to walk their dogs or they are health conscious. So we fund those infrastructures for bike lanes and, and, and we provide, you know, really, really smart signage to keep them safe. So if it's a right turn, it's clearly marked bikers. And, you know, you know, they'll look for them when you, when you, when you're turning the corner. So we want to protect our pedestrians. And I just love the way it's set up on Cleveland Avenue. There are actually guardrails in between the sidewalk and the street and that, and certain areas, especially over bridges. And it helps to keep the runners and walkers a little bit safer from the traffic.
That's great.
For traffic safety, that means funding signage that says, no scooters on this bike path. One of the issues that we're dealing with now is the motorized scooters on the walking tracks, paths or biking paths. And we hadn't anticipated that popularity, that resurgence of popularity. And so, you know, we're looking at that. And as our residents report near accidents or something like that, we're now looking at what can we do to keep our walkers safe, but allow our scooters and skateboards and, you know, not, not micromanage it, but allow, make sure that we have a safe place for everyone to have fun.
Right. Yep, those are tricky.
Yes, it is. So for health, it's kind of making sure that our swimming pools, we have two major pools, I think, and that will be Highland and at the community center. And making sure that there's a special space for babies taking swimming lessons or for seniors who aren't going to go very fast in the lap pool. And those are addressed by having special hours that they know they can go and, and be in and, you know, get their swim in. But anything that promotes physical and mental wellbeing, those are the things that we are looking for. And then another example of a health issue would be for us to be prepared for natural emergencies, flooding, tremendous snowstorms, things like that. By pre-salting, you know, by using sodium chloride, it keeps a lot of salt from being in our water, Alum Creek. And it's just so much, I never expected that it would be, you know, my job would be that involved. But it, it makes me more proud of the work that I do. And each council is learning from a previous council or councils long ago, why certain steps need to be made. And so other than our bylaws and our charters, we're standing on the shoulders of many, many others who have come in and set the foundation for our city. And, you know, we can look at that and keep making it better and better and better as we go along.
Mm hmm. How has your background as a community builder and policy expert shaped your approach to financial stewardship?
I would say most of the jobs that I've had require a little bit of critical thinking. I'm not engaged so much in what they say is why they say. And so that goes to listening, deep listening skills. I already know what I think, but I can't frame an answer for them unless I understand the window that they're looking through when they are emphatic about a process. Let's put it like that. So my background is in business. It's in work performance technology, which allows me to understand the city team and the methods that they use to, to address problems in the city. Instead of trying to come up with an answer, I try to understand what the question really is. And so I spend a lot of time and I know how to do that through my master's degree in work performance. What tasks do that person have and why do they feel so strongly? And how do I engage them to work smarter, to work harder? My public policy, my PhD in public policy program taught me how to look and deeply review financial statements for $2, $3, $5 billion. uh financial statements for two, three, five billion dollar small city budgets. Uh I understand how to read a budget and I understand exactly what questions to ask. I understand how to ask a question without a person feeling like I'm challenging them specifically. Because when you do that, you get pushback. Well, she doesn't think I know how to do my job. Yes, I do. And I could not be on a finance uh group. So I am prepared, I am equipped. And when I got to the city, there were things that I understood well, that were within my realm of responsibilities. I knew that once I got to know our teams, I've I've felt a sense of trust. And I didn't spend a lot of time on uh are they right or wrong? But wow, these guys are great. They know their stuff, they know what they're doing. And so uh with with the city of Westerville, you have your information ahead of time. And so it's much easier to go through the entire section of the budget that's going to be dealt with and have your questions ready for them for further explanation. I pride myself, I'm always a curious person. And so I focus on what it is, that piece of the puzzle that I do not know. And so I don't make the assumption that I know. Once I knew that I could trust uh our city management team or a city manager that leads the team, I don't feel like I need to micromanage her. I don't feel like I need to be in her office every day or calling her every day because she's so good at providing information uh ahead of time, all the way down to maybe our monthly lookaheads. They make it easier for us. We never walk into a situation, we rarely walk into a situation totally blind. And we know it's coming and it allows us to prepare for that. And then that mentality, no question is a stupid question, is prevalent for uh for both of us, uh the city and the council members. And so because you're you always have every couple of years, a half or a third of the team running and being reelected or not, it you know, you it's it's this constant engagement and involvement. And um I think it works well for Westerville.
Mm hmm. Great. And that begs another question. When you were first elected, can you talk to us about that process of onboarding, so to speak, right? How do you get up to speed? What resources do you have? And you know, what can you impart to our new incoming um council members this season?
So the chair, uh Mike Hayek, uh who is retiring this uh December was so is so good at uh helping to lead. And uh he has that history. And so when he uh transfer his knowledge to the city, they know how to prepare us because he has that, you know, he's been through it for 30 years. So I'm not talking about his views on any particular thing, but he knows that charter and he knows the bylaws, kind of like the back of his head. And so he knows where we should be. That's important. That's big. Uh and so we get on board in January, but we've already been given the book uh long before the election, really. And you can see how the city structures its its budget for infrastructure, what what land is looking at developing or uh it 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 makes it a lot easier, but the but the council person has to be prepared uh to do all of that reading and learning as they try to manage the city. And so hopefully each council will have uh senior statespeople who are willing to help train and and give guidance to others who are just coming on council. It's a lot, but they make it look easy. They, the city departments, when they come up and they give their requests for their budgets, they have their PowerPoints and they have their justifications and they have their, you know, their their stuff together so that uh it 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 just makes it easier. There's no such thing as getting on council and you're going to change something right away. There are many times there are people who come in to with that mindset that I'm going to get on council and I'm going to do this. No, you're not. It's probably going to take you a year to really get your head on strong as to what's happening. And that's why it's important, if you think you want to run for council, to start involving yourself with uh leadership Westerville, the academies, so that you already have some inkling to what's going on and how how it's done. Parks and Recreation is a huge one because it's very, very important to our residents that programming uh is in place for themselves and their children and and they can eat, sleep, live, work, play safely in a competently run um city.
Mm hmm, mm hmm. That's well said. So with Mike's retirement, who's our longest sitting member of council?
Uh huh. Well, I think that would be our mayor, Ken Wright.
Oh, that's great. Looking ahead, what what's one budget outcome you hope residents can point to at the end of your next term?
I hope that they can point to the consistency of our city management team in terms of delivering a clear, transparent budget, uh maintaining very high ratings. In this case, we're at the highest. And um um uh I yeah, I think those two things are are really, really important to people, I think, for the city. We often get uh comments such as, well, you know, transparent with the budget or we, you don't show us a budget. And we go through a great lens of putting that up online. And then we have meetings. And so part of the responsibility of the community is, you know, I know city council meetings may seem a little boring, but come uh and understand what it is that we do and the direction that we're going. I understand that all of the city council meetings are uh uh recorded. Uh some of the city council work sessions may or may not be recorded. Don't quote me on that. I don't think that they all are. Uh but uh the important thing is that they have someone that they know on the council that they can go to and talk to. And this is the importance of engaging in the community. I host a chat with your vice mayor every Wednesday from nine to 11 at the uh Family Room Cafe. Uh it's quiet enough. Sometimes I go to Java Central. Sometimes um a group will ask me to come and speak to them. While while I cannot speak on behalf of the city, I can give them my personal uh viewpoint uh on how the city is doing. But there are many ways that we can keep people engaged, but our residents have a responsibility also. And that is to uh utilize the tools that we have in place to uh keep keep themselves updated or to reach out to council members. I'm not the only one who are who is uh who may be hosting um uh something for the residents, but to keep good contact with them and to let us know if there's a problem and let us know what we got right sometimes, as well as what we have wrong. Your voice, your voice, I tell them all the time, is important to me. And I may not be able to fix uh a problem because there's, I'm one of seven. And so, but I can certainly take back to the council that there is some concern about an issue or that we need to do a better job of educating people about what's going on before we take the vote.
Right. And to your point, the more feedback that you have, the more direction you have in in how to educate or you know, what decisions to make there.
Right.
Great reminder. Okay, what impact would you say walkability and transit improvements have on the quality of life for our residents?
Well, it's a it's not just a health issue that I spoke of before. Walkability is uh since I've come on council, we have uh increased the number of Coda or Coda Plus uh buses. There is a positive and there is an equal negative to everything. But with the buses, it it increases um traffic a little bit. Uh but walkability, from where I sit, where I live, I can walk to the community center. I really could walk to out of mine if I so desired, which is where I work. Um there is a pull off on Main Street where the bus goes. And that's also where the Coda Plus buses are, which our students can use. That's by near the old senior citizen building. It's, everything is kind of a short hop unless you're talking about crossing over into, say, Polaris.
Sure.
Um it's easy to get around. I'm not saying that we are at the point where we no longer have to look at this problem. Um a lot of people come into Westerville just to work. And it's hard if you have to go downtown to transfer to a bus to come up from that side of the bridge or the highway to Westerville to work. Uh and then if you have uh children to drop off for school, we just assume that everybody has a car and they don't. So a lot of people may want to take a bicycle for their part time job to ride, you know, up to uptown Westerville or uh a scooter or some other non-traditional way. But what we're looking at now is we can't all drive. We don't have that kind of space to handle that load of traffic. And believe me, we are looking at that very intently. And so some things that we we can do or are doing are making right turn only lanes so that everybody's not held back because, you know, one person needs to turn right. Um and you have to go through that life cycle three times. Yeah. And then just from a health standpoint, we have to make sure that uh we protect people who are on bikes, that we have bike uh stalls where they can park their bike and lock it up safely. And that we have um electric car charging ports, which are now in all all of, most of the newer schools that we're building, uh they are down in the park and they are in uptown Westerville. A lot of people have um electric cars. So we have to keep up with the times and make sure that, you know, there's a place for them to get a quick charge, you know, so that they can get back home. So um our parking in Westerville, uptown Westerville, at least during Fourth Fridays and special events, are a little bit challenging. So we have to look at other ways of getting people up there, making sure that we have ample parking for them for that event.
Mm hmm. I think I'm going to head over to the farmer's market here when we're done. And I'm already thinking about where to park. But in a way, it's a good problem to have, right?
Yeah, that's a good problem to have.
Okay, wonderful. So you've you've already touched on our schools a little bit in this conversation. Um in just watching you through the campaign and and other interviews, I know that you support the uh levy issue on the ballot this fall for this school. Can you talk about that a little bit? And um you know, just explain why it is that you do support that issue?
We talked about this as a council and Westerville is really big on community partnerships. And so as a council, we do support our schools and we stand with them. The bottom line on on all of this is the children.
Mm hmm.
Uh if I if I disregard the amount of funds that they give to a certain area of the school budget or something like that, I I don't, I'm not in tune enough to how the budget was put together and is run. I know that our states have have really decided to cut funding to our schools. Whichever side of the issue that you stand on, the ending result is if you don't fund it, our schools are going to uh lose some of their private students to private schools, parochial schools, or maybe even homeschooling. Uh I know that there are lots of people who who don't believe that there's complete transparency or don't agree with the decisions the school board may have made in terms of how they structure their funding for the schools. But it's kind of cyclical. A lot of that information, a lot of those demands come from the state. And so the schools have to work with what they have. Uh but I'll circle back. The end result is what is best for our kids. Like it or not, nobody wants to pay more taxes. I don't care how you structure it. That's a big deal. And uh so homeowners may or may not feel that more money is the answer. There there is pushback on that particular proposed levy. My question is, in the end, whether you like A or B, the end result is our children. So we have to look at what's absolutely necessary. Uh how often, you know, the schools are coming up for levies or the promises that were made in terms of what will be done with that. I I say involve yourself before it becomes an issue. But like the marijuana issue, you're being dictated to by the state legislator, which is unclear on many things. And so we take the heat. That is what we signed up for. We're going to be the representative. So the so the residents are going to come after us. I'm sorry, you have to sit down at the table and maybe they need to get involved. Maybe they need to say, well, if we have to cut something out, what may be the best thing to cut out? Do we need music and ours? I think absolutely yes. But another parent may say, no, that has nothing to do with learning your ABCs. We all think that differently and and besides respecting each other's thoughts, we need to become engaged. We need to help the school district. Say what's on your mind before it becomes an issue because I don't know how, not knowing the depths of the budget, I don't know how we can continue with uh the budget that we have. Uh maybe a particular school is crumbling. Maybe they need more repairs. You have to look at the whole picture, not just one piece of the puzzle. And it's a difficult job.
Mm hmm.
Uh my children are beyond the school age, but it's still important to me that our young adults, our high school students are getting quality education and learnings as good as the next next district, which may be Dublin, Oghana or Worthington. Uh I want us to have the best of everything, but we have to be, we have to encourage our schools to manage that well. And I'm certainly not saying that they're not managing it well. And I'm certainly not saying that they're not managing it well. The state will come and say, we're cutting 25% and we're not prepared for it. That's crazy. And so in the middle of a school year, what do you do? So it's, it's a tricky, it's a tricky, um, problem to have. And, uh, I, I just say it's involvement, it's sitting down together and it's going back to the state saying, this is not working for us. We have too many children or we have not enough children or we're busing as well as we can and we're not, we're trying to not leave out anyone or not impact the parents' ability to know that kids are gonna be on the bus and they can go to work. Now they may have to take them if they're in a certain range. It's a lot going on. And so I try never to, to take a deep side. I know what my personal thoughts are. I know as a former realtor, the impact of schools in a community on property values. And so I think we have to look at that, like take the big picture. Is $100, and I just pulled that number out of, out of my head. Is that really going to impact your pocket? And it may, uh, to the degree that you wouldn't vote for that. Or on the other side of the issue, hello, school districts, every budget has a place where, uh, it could, something can be reduced or a need can be cut out. So let's sit back down at the table and figure out what that is. Uh, my only problem is that, that was thrown at us and we don't have the, we didn't have the time to really plan for that decrease in extracurricular activities or something, things that are so important, uh, to young people. My question would be, how many classes can their brains take a day without music or choir? Those things that, that they are suggesting that we pull out of the budget, that may be the one thing that causes that child to want to get up and go to school that day. Because they have art and they love art. There's more than one way to learn. And it's tough.
Yeah. Yeah, and I think, you know, Westerville is not unique in, in, in losing those funds from the state, right? I think most of our schools in the state of Ohio banned together and, and joined that fight at the State House this last year to try to encourage our legislators to keep these things in mind that you're talking about. But still, they diverted a lot of those funds to our private schools rather in, in the form of vouchers rather than our public schools. And, and that's how I first got really engaged in our schools and community was just watching, um, our administrators in, in the district lead that conversation, which has been so eye-opening. And by the time this, this conversation airs, we'll have, um, heard from the district what programs they, they have had to identify to be cut or reduced or, you know, pay-to-play fees, things like that. So I am anxious to hear that. But to your point, if, if we don't fund our schools, that will directly impact our students, unfortunately, in a negative way.
Right. And not every parent can pay that fee
Right.
to play. And so what happens to those? Well, all of a sudden, we've created a barrier for those kids to be able to participate in extracurricular activities. Bands, band members get scholarship money. You don't know where that's going to lead. Students get scholarships from athletic endeavors or from, based on their academic performance. And we don't want to leave those students out or cut out those things that are going to impact their future. Maybe that's the only scholarship they ever, that, that they will get. You know, that will help with the funding of their, their career journey or college journey. So.
And therein lies, I think, a really great perspective too, when the community bands together and joins together to fund our schools. So I, I did the quick math. It's with the earned income tax for family bringing in $60,000 a year. That's $450 in taxes for our schools, right? And so if you have a student who is going to have to pay those fees to join, you know, a team, whatever it may be, are, are you looking at $450 in that alone, right? And but when our community joins together to fund it in, in this, um, earned income tax, it really positively impacts all of our students.
It really does. And, you know, Westerville has a, a large retired community who have fixed incomes and they may be okay and can manage it. But they are reporting to us, I'm on a fixed income. You voted now, you vote again in five years, you vote again. This is coming out of the range of what I'm willing to afford. So we can't look at just one person.
Absolutely. And that's, I think.
And I, and I tried to tell people in that situation, when you get ready to sell your house, you will be happy that the family that's moving in uh, or who are looking to buy your home, it won't drop in property value, not to that degree. Westerville is insulated because we only have so much space here. And everybody wants to live in Westerville. Well, we're 13.2, 13.5 square miles. Everyone can't live here. And we are busily trying to figure out how we can get more housing, uh, into our city uh, because of the growth of Central Ohio.
Right.
And so each problem feeds into the other and.
Right. Well, you touched on two, two really great points. One is for our senior citizens. So this issue, you know, levy for the schools is only on earned income. And so if they are on this fixed income, they won't be subject to it. And so the district was, um, considerate of that when they decided to go this route rather than a traditional income tax. Um, and then in this way also, you know, you talk about square miles. Well, as, as an taxing authority, the district is, um, and, and serves 52 square miles of our, you know, for our, our students and families. And so another feature of this, uh, levy is that it's district, our residents within the school district who are subject to the tax, not our property owners only within the city of Westerville. Um, so really, really good information there. But this is, I think, is a good segue too, is how can we bring our youth and our seniors together to build a stronger future for the city of Westerville?
I think that opportunity to be together. Leadership Westerville works with Ottermind, who works with, okay, so this particular day, we're gonna go and do projects for our seniors. We're gonna, uh, rake their leaves or paint that side of the house or, uh, do small repairs or help clean out or, or anything to that degree. Seniors hold a wealth of information and the smartest young person in the world will not look at them and think they're Fred Flintstone, but look at them and think, this is an opportunity for me to learn something perhaps can't be taught in school. And, uh, hopefully their parents have taught them to respect seniors by, you know, maybe getting off of the scooter and walking past them, you know? Especially if they're a little more frail or something like that. Teaching them to respect them. I, so it's the opportunity to engage with each other, to, to understand that they're not gone. They're here. They're not dinosaurs. They're not all dinosaurs like Mike. He's gonna love that, right? But that they are people, their grandparents, you know, so in some cases, they are parents to children.
Right.
Uh, for whatever reason, but that, um, we should hold, we should uphold our seniors as something to be, someone to be revered, someone who has a piece of information. But, but, but from the other, uh, end of it, our young people can do things like spending time to teach seniors to do basic, uh, computer skill activities, things that they need to do. And so this world isn't for one sector. It's not just for millennials. It's not for Z's. It's not for just baby boomers. We are all people together who have to share this space. And, um, on the other end of the senior issue, I think where Westerville falls short is that we don't have a lot of options for where do we go when we no longer need 3,000 square feet of space or 5,000? And that hasn't been, uh, addressed to the degree that it can be. Uh, because as in terms of housing options, you know, where do you go? Do you stay in your home? Do you, you know, move out of Westerville altogether? You're in that, uh, section of your life where you're not quite ready for dependent living. And you're doing quite fine in your home, but you can't manage maybe, um, repairs or things like that, uh, that need to be done. And so this is where Westerville stepped up to the plate and they have their, uh, Age in Place program where we have grant money. You have small, uh, hole in your roof for, or something like that. Uh, we can assist and it's called Aging in Place. And of course, all they have to do is get on the, the computer or call the city and get information about those programs. So we're working on it. We're working very, very, very hard. We, we are learning as we grow and we're learning as they age, what kind of activities we need to have for our beloved senior citizens.
Yeah, I think that's such a wonderful program. How, how is that marketed? How, how do you guys reach our senior citizens for programs like this?
Well, of course it's online, but if they don't, if they're not online savvy, uh, we talk it up. We talk about it. If we can get them to the one-stop shop that we're building, and that's the renovation of the old city hall, where they go one place to pay their income tax, one place to pay their electric bill, one place to whatever. Uh, there are also, uh, uh, mini courses that are taught in the community center. And, but that's an area that we, uh, I think we could do a little bit more. We just have to put our minds together and be creative and make sure that we, uh, are getting the information out there in a way that they can access it.
Right, right. And that's the trick always, right?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so before we wrap this up, I wanna bring it back to you. What is your favorite memory in Westerville?
With, with my children, it was leaf crunching. And so I live very close to, uh, Heritage Park. And just going for walks after church on Sunday or on Saturday, there was always something going on. You know, I tell people all the time, kids don't wanna come home to see a leaf on the wall that their parents donated money. They don't wanna come home to see a monument. I asked my son once, why do you like coming home to Westerville? And they say, Mom, it just fit our family so well. But his fondest memories are activities that invol, that, that involved him, uh, within the school district. And, uh, they are both Eagle Scouts and they are both, they loved walking on the campus of Ottermind. And, uh, but they like coming back to a place where it just feels warm and fuzzy to them. And they saw that mom and dad were happy. And so right now, there's no place to be on Thanksgiving, Christmas and the other major holidays except Westerville. It just, church holds a warm place in their heart and it's, it's a beautiful city.
Yeah.
And only thing they, they, they don't like is having to explain to their friends like, where is it near? What city is it near? It is a city. No, but what major city is it near? So I could get it in my head. Okay, Columbus, right? And they also liked that because Columbus adds another dimension to their, to their lives. That, that's where the black community is. And so whereas Westerville is only eight, nine percent African-American, they still have friends from their church who lived in Columbus or lived in Worthington and they can identify with another whole group of young people there and they were, yeah, so they loved that.
Yeah. Oh, that's wonderful. I'm glad that it feels like, like home for everyone still. Okay, so where can we find you out and about as you're campaigning?
So as I'm campaigning, of course, I, uh, I have the chat with your mayor. Uh, I am always at the quarterly luncheons. I participate in the Business Wise Discussion Round Tables. I actually get into the schools through my work with Wedge, Westerville Education, uh, Foundation. And then pretty much at every major event, I'm there. I'm very engaged. I have the state of the city that I attend and the evening elegance. And of course, there's uptown Westerville and the farmer's market and, you know, great restaurants. And so I stay busy now. I don't have to cook as much. So I'm like, hey, let's go uptown Westerville and have some good Mexican food or go to this Asian supper club. And, you know, it's just a lot of things to do. And, um, these are my friends, the people that I work with. The residents are my friends, even though I'm their council member. There's no real division. I hope to be, I try to be a problem solver and I, and that they know that they can come to me. I don't have the final answer. And in many cases, it's not a Westerville issue, it's a state issue. And so that's, one of my goals is to, uh, this year, is to keep council focused on what we can manage and what we can control. Yeah, it's okay as a private citizen to, to speak your voice or to protest or to, um, you know, engage with our state legislators. It's not either or. It's all of the above should be happening. But we were hired, we were voted to focus on managing the city of Westerville. And so sometimes that may not be so much of a social issue. We're talking about maintaining transparency. We're talking about accountability. We're talking about our utilities, our water, our environment. We're talking about sustainability in our community. Taking care of Westerville first is what our goal should be. And then, uh, incorporating, uh, any decisions or, or specific feelings we have, uh, about an issue by participating in, uh, letter writing or protests or, or whatever else on state issues. But sometimes we lose sight of why we're there. And we are there to make sure that we have a rainy day fun. We are there to make sure that we're planning five, seven years out for, um, building of our infrastructure. We are there to, we're not so busy that we don't have time to answer the questions and the, and respond to the needs of our citizens. And so if one were to ask me, is it an either or? I would say yes. If you were voted. If you were voted uh for to protect the values, to engage in Westerville um issues and to protect uh the right of everyone to have access to uh the other issues, then that's fine. Just keep that in mind first.
Thank you so much for your time and for being here. And I hope to see you around town this season.
You will, you will. We got a bunch of things coming up, the great pumping carvings and the snowflakes. And parades and it's just, just a fun time to be here.
Yeah, wonderful. Well, thank you.
You are welcome. My pleasure.